Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this wonderful webinar that everybody is looking forward to. Brought to you by the Council of Hotel and Restaurant Educators of the Philippines in partnership with Thirty Minute Talks. And of course, this is co-hosted by Corep Iloilo and Panay Island, Corep Negros Island in Sikihor, and Corep Cebu. Special Educators Webinar: Top 10 Online Facilitator Skills for Effective Course Delivery. I hope everybody is ready because this is a wonderful afternoon of learning and exciting thrill coming from experts in the industry. We would like to welcome all of you members of the council. And of course, special greetings and acknowledgement to the President of Corep Negros region, Dr. Irene Yadorio, Noli Lalen, President Iloilo and Panay Island, Dr. Rolie Puzon, President of Corep Cebu, and the Board of Director in Charge, Dr. Jokam Malik, and also Dr. Ramon Sun. So, without further ado, let's get the ball rolling. I'd like to introduce the first panel who would talk to us about the fundamentals of conducting online classes. Some of you might not have seen, met him yet, but it is truly an honor for me to introduce to you this person because he is considered one of the world's foremost authorities on international tourism in the hospitality industry. And ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to introduce to you the international educator all the way from Subic, Dr. Andy Nazar Shuk.
You did that. And so, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our session. Today, we're here to talk about effective course delivery. And the question is, why are we here? Well, Professor Perry Hopson, Mr. Alan Williams, myself, several months ago, actually, when the pandemic started and everything was being locked down, we found that it would be good to offer online classes. And Lee's gonna, Lee's gonna shut off his video there for a while, too. That's one of our, one of our rules. But one of those things that we do is that we offer weekly webinars. So every week on Wednesday at 2 o'clock, for the last 16 weeks, we have offered webinars. And what we are sharing today is the lessons that we have learned from all, doing all those webinars. Starting just like you, just a short three months ago, we didn't know what we were doing. Every day, we were learning something new. And so today, we are the first time we are going to share our experiences with you and talk about online classes. Now, myself, I have the opportunity of talking about the fundamentals of doing online webinars. And some of this is going to be very basic, but it's very important. And then, Mr. Alan Williams will talk to you about his area, and Professor Perry Hopson will do the third section. So we have three sections today. And I know our, the title of our show is Thirty Minutes, but today, we're actually scheduled here for one hour. So we're going to do three 15-minute sessions, and then we're going to open it up for questions. And then that's going to be today's program, so you can keep that in mind. And so my focus is on the fundamentals. Fundamentals means, what does that mean? Well, you have to set what we call the interactive stage. When you walk into a classroom, you are on stage. There is no doubt about it. You're in front of a group, everybody's watching you, and so therefore, you are a performer. You're an educator, but you're still performing in an educational setting for your students. So now, you're no longer in the classroom. You are now going to be online, which changes the dynamics of what you're going to be doing. Now, this is where we move into a couple fundamental questions when you hear people going from the classroom to an online setting. And the first one is, is personal appearance important when delivering your message? Now, I want to ask you that. Does everybody think it's important or not important? Some people say it's not important at all. Because I'm a teacher, the message is the point. So no matter what I look like or what I sound like, as long as I give the student a message, that's all that matters. So looks don't matter. And some people say, "I'm the teacher." "I'm the teacher." And so, the question is, doesn't, I can do whatever I want. The students have no control over my session. And the last one is, I don't have to worry about my appearance. So that's what, there are some people out there that believe that. And so if that's true, then technically, this is what you could look like and teach your class. It doesn't matter. But if you do believe that it matters, then why? See, personal appearance, I believe, is very important. Yes, it's important because it adds a level of professionalism. And when you have a level of professionalism, then you gain respect from your students. So yes, your clothing is important. Yes, I could come in with T-shirt and shorts. I have a good message I'm going to deliver today. And I don't wear a tie anymore, I'm retired, I'm a happy retired teacher. But those things are choices every time you go in front of a camera. And when you go in front of the camera, what you look like, especially in an online class, is very, very important. So your grooming, your facial expressions, even your non-verbal communications. So you, some people are just going to sit there like a rock in front of their camera, and they're going to read their lesson plan for the day, and students are going to fall asleep as they watch that presentation. Then they may not be paying presentation, paying attention at all. So the first part of this point is, yes, I believe that you need to be concerned about what you look like online. And today, I'm going to be giving you many different photos and examples of how we have improved over time. So here's the first example. If you see the picture on the left, that's one of the early, one of our earlier pictures, you know, yeah. But we never really used that picture because when we first started, we said, "We can't do this, it looks too dark." If you look at the picture on the right, yeah, that's me, too. Different, little different picture, a little bit more light, which, so between the two pictures, which one do you think is better? Well, considering those two pictures, I think the one on the right is better. If you look in the picture next to my shoulder, that's a picture of my wife, but that's, that's a different story. So the first rule for the fundamentals of teaching online classes, lighting is vital to your online appearance. If you do not have the proper lighting, you're not going to look good. So dark is boring. You don't, you, when you watch TV at night, you don't want to watch a dark screen, you want to watch a bright screen. So brighter is better. If you look at the two pictures again, the one on top is my dark photo, and the one on the bottom is one with better lighting. And we'll go through the different types of lighting, but tell you, you can have quality lighting with just a simple desk lamp. When you go and watch a TV studio, they always have those big fancy lights and all those things. Here, what I have, as you can tell, I have very good lighting now. I'm very happy with the way my lighting is on camera. I hope you agree with that. But I only use desk lamps. I have one, two, three different desk lamps that I've always had, even before the pandemic and teaching online. So I use those desk lamps, and I, I like them to help me look better on camera. And so that makes a big difference when you're starting to do your presentation. So lighting is number one. When you sit down for your next class, your next webinar, your next online class, I want you to be, concentrate on your lighting. And we'll give you a few ideas of how this works. Now, the most important light is actually a light behind your computer. And if you have other lights, you have what we call key lights, lights from the side, which I have two lights, I have two desk lamps, one's pointing from each side. One from behind the computer, one from each side. And if you really want to get fancy, then I have what we call a backlight, which I added later on because the backlight is very important to reduce shadows. Now, if you have those, a key light, two fill, a fill light, two key lights and a backlight, you are just as same as any TV production studio. Now, if you look at this diagram on the left, the light is behind the computer. That's the most important one, that's your fill light. Now, if you also look at the camera, the computer is raised up so that the camera is eye level. I have a problem with this, too. I try, I try my best to be eye level, but keeping the camera eye level keeps you centered in the, in the frame. Now, the other thing is, you don't want to be too low. Okay, because there's no sense having a space. You want to be up as high as you can, have a little space between the top of your head and the top of the camera. Lighting and camera position are key. Now, let's give you a few examples. If you look at this picture on the right, that's all you need. You have one light, and those lights I see in the mall all the time. And this person just raised their computer on a few books, and they got a light, and they're ready to do their webinar. Now, you might recognize a couple of these faces here. Because I know Mel there, Mel on the bottom left, and she has her computer on some books, too. So she's already learning from, from the internet. And Miss Tina Kino, she has her, she, from the beginning, when she started to what she's doing now, she's done much better. If you look at her little new desk setup with diffuse light, her top picture, you know, the lighting is a little washed out, but Tina looks very good on the bottom picture. So she has taken her time in order to improve the lighting. You have to do the same thing. The second part of the fundamentals of online teaching is audio quality. No one wants to listen to poor quality. And I see webinars where everybody's going, "Can you hear me? Can you hear me?" Well, you should know if people can hear you. Yes, there are always issues, I always want to confirm, but when you are in your video conferencing software, whether you Zoom or Google Meet, there are settings where you can test your microphones, check the quality of your video before you even turn on the meeting or the class. You have to get in the habit of doing that. The most common issues with sound and audio is the sound level. Now, there's always a gauge in your settings where you can check the thing. I'm looking at a gauge now, when I'm talking, it's green. I can tell that the sound is going through the system. I hope you hear it, but I'm pretty confident that you do. The other thing that's a problem sometimes is echo. Now, when you're in your room, let's say you're in a kitchen, you have your computer on the, on the kitchen table, everything in that kitchen is hard, that's why it's so noisy in the kitchen. The sound bounces off of everything. So what you need to do is try to find a place where there's a lot of material. If your, your better, your sound is better off next to a big curtain and putting a, an old blanket on your desk and maybe hanging some clothes around you. So there's different ways you can do it. You can go and look online. Some people use egg, egg, old egg, cardboard egg cretins in order to reduce the sound. See, now me, I got lucky, I found some of these tiles. See these things? This is, this absorbs sound. So on my desk, I laid these on my desk, and it helped improve the sound tremendously. You can listen to, as you listen to speakers, you will hear the difference between someone who has muted sound and someone has an echo. So work on your sound, listen to yourself to see how you sound. Students these days do not want to listen to poor quality sound. If you watch students today, they have quality headphones, they have quality earphones, they're listening to music all the time, they do not want to listen to some scratchy, terrible sounding class. That's the competition you have. So what kind of microphone do I use? Well, my microphone looks really fancy, doesn't it? But it's actually, this whole kit I just bought off Lazada for less than like 800 pesos. I got a good deal. Okay? If you're going to be teaching classes for the next year, it's very important for you to invest in yourself. Many classes are going to be online because of the pandemic, there's no doubt about that. So you have the opportunity to invest in yourself, improve the video quality, improve your audio quality, and then that will help you improve the quality of your class. And in six months from now, when they're doing evaluations, if you're not one of the instructors that are doing a great job online, then you're going to be the one that they're going to be looking at. Maybe we need to make a replacement. You don't want that to happen, so you have to do your best to do quality. The assessments, the online content, all those things are important, but these are the fundamentals of you looking and sounding good. Let's talk about backgrounds. No one wants to see your messy room. So either clean up your room, which is hard, or go digital. That's the choice. I used to have a back, just use a bookshelf as a background, that was nice, but I also found that digital is much easier and also much fun. Because if you look at my background right now, I have, I made this background just for this webinar today, which, which was fun to make. Now, green screens can support your backgrounds or your topic of presentation poorly done. It can be another distraction, so you have to be careful here. And I'll explain video backgrounds in a second. But if you look at the pictures, you see the BBC, that's a famous one. He had his kid, the kid came into the room, it was a distraction. Now, a lot of people get all upset about that. Well, you know what? We're working from home, we all have families, we all have things that happened. I don't know, it took me three or four weeks before my wife would stop coming in and saying hello to me during the, during my class, or she would be on the phone and she'd be talking really loud, or somebody be mowing, mowing the lawn outside. So now, everyone sort of knows that during this timeframe, let's be quiet because it helps provide a quality course if you have a quiet space to do it. Now, if you look at the bottom pictures, that was actually Dr. Jerry Agusa from University of Hawaii. He was one of our speakers on Thirty Minute Talks a couple of weeks ago. He was talking about the situation of the pandemic in Hawaii. And I wore my Hawaiian shirt and had an Hawaiian background because that was the topic of the presentation. So the backgrounds can support your presentation. They can make it easier for the students to see something that's in connection with what you're talking about. And changing your backgrounds is very easy, so that's something that we'll teach you how to do. Now, this is our 90 seconds. This is what, we just started to do this segment about a month ago in our Thirty Minute Talks every week. Every week, we do one little clip. It's only 90 seconds long, but I did talk about virtual backgrounds before. So instead of re repeat, doing it again, I'm going to share the thirty, virtual background 90 seconds. So pay attention, and this is, you'll see how the virtual backgrounds work. Welcome to 90 Seconds. Today, we're going to talk about virtual backgrounds. When you're in Zoom and have your camera on, you can go to the icon, and you can click on Choose Virtual Background. That will give you a new window, and then you can decide what your background will be. So for example, if I want to be in San Francisco, I click on San Francisco. Now, this is an, an easy way for you to improve your professional appearance. If you want to have a natural background, great, that's easy, too. So all these things are possible in Zoom. So just by clicking these different icons, you can put your own photos in here. And I use this one when I'm talking about 30 minutes. Sometimes I, you've seen this one in the past. And also, you know, I use this one from the, from the Philippines. It's one picture from the Philippines, another picture from Palawan. All of these pictures are possible just by uploading them into Zoom. How do you upload? Up here, you see this one little plus sign? You add image or video. So let's take a look at one of the videos that is already in Zoom. Here it is. I could, in the Aurora, I can look at the Aurora. Now, how does this all work? If you want to increase the quality of your image, you use a green screen. What is a green screen? Well, let me show you. If you have no background, this is a green screen. The image is displayed on the screen screen behind you. So you can use a green tablecloth, you can use a blue sheet, you could paint your wall green if you wanted to. Easy ways for you to have a virtual background. And that concludes today's 90 Seconds. Thank you. And so that was an easy way for you to see how we, how it's so easy to do the digital backgrounds. And yes, I bought a green piece of cloth, a tablecloth, basically. They sell those at Lazada, too. And you set it up behind you. Now, if you're going to use a green screen, there's, there's a couple of rules. One, remember, lighting from the front is very important, that you do anyway. But if you're going to use a green screen, you also need to put a light or two to point on the green screen. What that does, that increases the quality of the image between. You'll see some people, when they are using their green, when they use a digital background without a green screen, you'll see sometimes their hands disappear, you, you know, their, their face will fade in and out. But on this picture right now, and I think it's pretty good, it, you, it's pretty clear, but I am using a green screen right now, the same one you see in that picture. So it works out very well. I really like the green screen, makes life a little easier. Here's an example of the competition we had in Thirty Minute Talks for our students. And Thirty Minute, this, the picture on the left was before, and this, the picture on, on the right is after. Now, these are two pictures, a kind of, the, one is when I was using my, just my background, my bookshelf. So that was kind of fun, but I decided that it was easier to use the digital background. Now, this, the fun thing with, even with my friends, it says, the picture on the left, the whole thing was a greens, was a green screen. I wasn't even there when I was having a meeting with Perry and Alan one time, they didn't know I wasn't there. Some of your students will try to fool you, too. Giving you some examples from the beginning. Yes, you could see me on the top right, I had my, my virus beard there in the beginning, I was growing a beard. And if you look at Alan and Perry, you see how dark their pictures are? Not very good. Then we, we started to play with green screens, this was a fun thing. So Alan pointing, pointing to the rocket, the Irons Rock in Australia. Perry was trying to figure out the Aurora, and if you could look at my map, it was backwards. We didn't know what we were doing, we were playing with it until we got better. But then finally, you start to say, okay, now we're getting comfortable. The lighting is better, the positioning is better, you're getting comfortable using that green screen. And because we're in the travel industry, we can use different scenes every time we talk about a travel topic. And of course, this is our, our VIP setup, we can use logos, we can put our names of our schools. So you decide on the image you want yourself to be portrayed online, and you can create that, you can do whatever you want. That's one of the benefits of a green screen. Some of our friends out there, everyone is improving, are you? There's Lily Beth from LPU, even when Lily Beth showed us her greens, her green screen or background one time, we said, "How come you don't have your logo on there?" So she put her logo right on the bookshelf, looks very good. And that's Pearl from National Caoshung University, upper left. She wasn't actually on the thing, she just put a very nice picture as a background, and she didn't even show up on the picture, that was the image she used. So different images, different looks, that's the way you can improve your appearance online. And of course, this is one example. Perry likes to show those kind of things. Now, where do you get all these pictures? Where do you get these things? Here's a list of Pexels, Pixabay, Onsplash, Ben Sound. Pexels, Pixabay, Onsplash gives you royalty-free photos. That's one of the issues, you can't just take people, pictures off the internet and use them. Some of them are licensed and all those other things, but these are royalty-free photos, you don't have to worry about it, you can use them. Ben Sound is a good place to get music that's royalty-free. And Whibbits is the one where you can get the, the videos that can play in the background. It's really kind of cute, we started playing with that recently. So practice makes perfect. Yes, you have to start, I start, you start in the beginning, you work on lighting, you finally gets better, and then finally, you say, "This is the look I like, and that's the one I've been using ever since." So practice is important. But keep in mind, it's not easy. So how do we get ready for every week for our Thirty Minute Talks? This, we have weekly meetings, we discuss topics, fix mistakes, we do brainstormings, we have calendars, we test everything. And especially, this is important, when you have guest speakers, we always have one rehearsal with a guest speaker. Not everyone is comfortable pushing the buttons. So we teach them how to push the buttons, how to share their screen and do it so that it's comfortable for them when they are doing the webinar itself. And post-show, we always go, "What happened?" Now, something always happens. Video conferences are different, even meetings, if you use a meeting program and a webinar, they're completely different programs. Background noise is going to happen, just deal with it. Other computer programs can interfere with your session, so I always reboot my computer before I start a webinar so that everything is clear, and I shut off all those programs that I don't need. And your guest speakers don't know what buttons to push. Now, we record our sessions, but one time, I, I forgot to record the session. Thank goodness, we always have two people recording. So Mr. Williams was recording, we didn't lose a whole show because we didn't record it. So always have a backup. And know how to share a screen. When you do share screens, there's actually additional buttons to optimize for video and sound. So because I was showing a video today, I make sure that that was there. And then open your PowerPoint in an individual window. This is an interesting one. Sometimes when you open your PowerPoint on a, on a Zoom or meetings, the whole screen disappears, you don't know where you are. Well, if you open it up in a window, which you find in a slideshow setup, an individual window allows you to control a little bit better, just a little, something we picked up. A lot of different things. Now, concise and engaging, you're teaching in a virtual world. You know, young people today, they are social media experts, they watch YouTube all the time. All those things are important, and they don't really like high production quality video. They like, they like honest stories, so they want to hear our story, they want to see what we're doing, they don't want to be bored. So we have some fun. So this is, this is an example of how, in my class, when I taught a class in Taiwan online, I said, "Okay, when, instead of you, when you want to ask a question, show me something in the screen." And you can just tell by the looks on the students, they're all smiling because they're having some fun. That's a good way to have interaction with your students. Now, the final projects, and I have two more slides, they need to be interactive also. So I had the students create their own talk. You've heard of TED Talks, but they created a leadership talk. So the students had to do something online. I'm going to show you one video of one student, just a few seconds, on what, and this is why it's important to get students to do the same thing that we're doing and for you to set a good example. Now, this is KL, he's, actually, I think he's from the Philippines, and he gave this lesson.
This is the first time that I'm doing this online, and I have to admit that I'm very, very afraid because more often than not, we're used to doing this online, based on face-to-face, more intimate. But now, it seems like everything's influenced by technology and the internet, and it's something really, really scary, and I have to admit that.
Yeah, so he was very scared to do this, they were all scared. Nobody wants to go on camera. In the beginning, I didn't want to go on camera either, but here we are. So get comfortable on camera. If you feel good, if you look good, if you sound good, then everything makes it more comfortable for you. So the future of work is going to be online. There, this, there is no going back now. We have moved online, a lot of people are always going to be online. So we have to model a quality online presence. Even your students are going to do all of their job interviews online. So getting your students to look good, getting your students to sound good, will help them get jobs in the future. And so overall, those are the fundamentals, and I want to thank you very much for your attention. And now, I'm going to pass it over to our next speaker.
It is another honor to introduce our next panelist. He is a Senior Higher Education Consultant for the Higher Education Leadership Institute. Ladies and gentlemen, virtual applause for Dr. Alan Williams.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Andy. What a great presentation. Thank you very much, Lee, and thank you for, everybody, for this opportunity again to speak to you at Corep. And of course, thank you to President Joji Bian and Corep members. Many of you may recall a presentation that I gave back some months ago to you regarding the modes of flexible learning for higher education. And so today's presentation is really going to follow on from that and give you a little bit more detail that, that looks at a number of things that Dr. Andy's picked up in his presentation. So I'd like to revisit the earlier presentation and explore a little bit more about online assessment and learning activities. And of course, do that in a little more detail today so we can demonstrate a little bit about how engaging students is highly dependent on, on the two factors. That is, assessment and learning activities are completely independent, dependent upon each other as to how you engage your students. In doing so, as I said, I'll draw in a little few of the comments that Dr. Andy's made through his presentation. And I'm also, in one way or another, preluding to some of the comments that Professor Perry Hopson will cover as he will talk more about the online learning and teaching in his presentation. So in a number of recent discussions and presentations that I've been involved in over the last number of months, it's amongst the many challenges that I'm hearing regularly in institutions and people moving into the online space, the two challenges that come up most regularly is the ones that are continually debated and questioned, and that are student engagement and student assessment. How do we engage our students in the online space? And how do we carry out assessments when we don't have the students in front of us? So in my presentation today, I'll endeavor to address a number of ways in which you can improve student engagement through rethinking assessment styles, and also to demonstrate to you how student engagement and student assessments are actually intrinsically interconnected in the online world. So as everyone is aware, assessment is, is obviously a critical component of any educational process, and planning a high-quality assessment is always a challenge. And this is not only in the online space, but it also is a challenge in the face-to-face space. So irrespective and fundamentally, assessments should provide students with an idea of their progress in the course. It should identify individual strengths and weaknesses of those students, and ultimately, it should serve as a measure of whether or not the students have achieved the course learning outcomes and objectives. And I'm, we're going to talk a little bit more about course learning outcomes and objectives throughout this presentation. So although each of those serves valuable instructional or pedagogical functions, in recent years, it's become more important as we move from the online space or from the face-to-face space to the online space and to the mixed mode modalities, assessments also now engage students and prepare them with the skills that they'll need. And that's if they, whether they're going to carry on in a future course or it's for a practicum or skills or knowledge that they'll need in their future careers. So assessment is therefore not only important from a student perspective, but with online courses and the course space now becoming increasingly popular, and I would dare to say even a necessity with COVID-19 and the pandemic that we're facing, it's critical that institutions are also offering courses and experiences that directly relate to the knowledge and skills that students are looking for. So make sure your assessments align to objectives and line to the course because that's what students are looking for, it makes your courses more marketable. So from the outset, I'd like you to consider, if assessments are interesting and well-designed, and they're scaffold throughout your course, they then by implication become, make the course more interesting, make the course more applied and engaging, and hopefully, this all leads to better student outcomes. So if, if that's the case, let's explore a little bit about designing online courses. And in order to do so, let's take a look at the increasingly popular backward designs model of Wiggins and McTeague. And this is a model that I use from about 2005. In this model, learning outcomes or the objectives and the assessments are first and arguably the most important parts of, most important parts or stages of designing a course. So if you start in the design of a course, considering your learning outcomes or course objectives, and these are usually aligned to saying imparting knowledge, fostering debate and exchange, and discovering a knowledge either on the job or off. and discovering knowledge either on the job or off the job, then it would also make sense to ensure that all other course elements or course design elements build from the course objectives. And that if you build assessments that align directly to course learning outcomes and you build learning activities that are aligned to these assessments and you develop content that drives those learning outcomes, this alignment for each of these components or building box of the course should be fundamental to the overall design of the course. And with each of these steps in mind, let's now discuss a little bit more about the model of authentic assessments for online courses. So, authentic assessment is a method of assessment that seems to be becoming more and more popular in the online space in that it provides a whole range of benefits, but also some weaknesses that we'll talk about over traditional assessment methods. So, what is authentic assessment? And it's sometimes referred to as alternative performance-based assessment or direct assessment. It's a widely adopted method of assessment and is one that is becoming more popular as we've said. So, let's look at what makes assessment authentic. And Wiggins, again, in 1998, identified a few criteria. An authentic assessment must be realistic. That is, it must be achievable and related to the topic. It requires judgment and innovation. So, it requires some critical thinking skills. Asks the student to do the subject. So, it involves active learning. It replicates or simulates the real world. So, it looks at life experiences and the real-life world. It assesses the student's ability to effectively and efficiently use their range of knowledges and skills and allows the student opportunities to rehearse, practice, consult, get feedback, refine their performance throughout the assessment process so that it's a continuous learning and assessment process. To do these, each of these criteria, I guess, this probably sounds a little bit like what you currently do in your assessments. And if you think this sounds a little bit like your current assessment regime, I would hope that, yes, it does. But in creating authentic assessments, it's not always about creating new assessments. In many cases, it may just simply be looking at your existing assessments and working out a number of ways in which you can modify your existing assessment tasks that make them more dynamic rather than static. So, authentic assessments are dynamic and not static. In fact, in a survey of more than 1,500 online students, Magdalen Aslanian in 2018, they found that 74% of online students are pursuing their courses for career-focused reasons. That includes transitioning to a new career, updating their skills as they require, increasing their wages, or having to meet new or emerging employer requirements. So, for this student cohort, online student cohort, authentic assessment is even more important to them. So, simply put, an authentic assessment is one that requires students to apply what they've learned to a new circumstance or situation. And typically, these assessments can take one of two forms. They generally are real-world assessments that require students to engage in actual situations in their field of study. So, for example, in hospitality, we might say, creating an online marketing campaign for a restaurant or bar that introduces a new menu. This would require the students to have a basic understanding of the customer profile, the key benefits of the new menu, understanding social media and campaign development, understanding and using keywords and search engine optimization, and most likely, an ability to implement and monitor Google Analytics so they can actually see the effectiveness of their campaign. This level of understanding in assessment would also therefore most likely need to be developed across a course that really is across a range of weeks, multiple weeks in fact. And in fact, sometimes it might even be across multiple courses or multiple subjects within a course. And so, the assessment needs to be very, very carefully designed and very, very carefully thought about. Or, the other form of assessment for authentic assessment is realistic or simulated assessments. These are that they're relevant in nature, but have students engage in situations that mimic the real world. In other words, case studies as probably the best example. So, if you're teaching marketing as an example, in this case, you could get the students to develop an online marketing campaign similar to what we spoke about before. But that could fit in with the parameters of an established marketing plan that is also a subset of a strategic plan. So, you can see just in me talking about marketing plans and strategic plans, you can imagine how assessments can scaffold into, across subjects within a course. So, in introducing authentic assessment to your courses, you break the traditional paradigm of relying on multiple-choice questions, short-答案 tests and quizzes and only exams. These sorts of traditional assessments can generally lead to students believing that learning means staying up all night, cramming to memorize, and only preparing for exams, which is exactly not what we want. And one of the reasons why students become disengaged in courses. So, authentic assessment requires that learning isn't simply about recalling. It's about performing, which ideally should help motivate students to engage in the course and give them a far greater chance of success. As beneficial as authentic assessment can be, it also presents challenges. So, authentic assessment requires much more time for students and facilitators. And for students, authentic assessment typically takes much longer to complete than an average assessment. And that is, sorry, a traditional assessment, that could be a quiz or a test. And they usually need to be scaffolded over a number of weeks or over a number of topics. For facilitators, developing an authentic assessment can be an intense experience that requires course writers to identify and research relevant tasks, ensure those tasks are applicable in different areas. And that could be restaurants, bars, room service, et cetera, et cetera. And align these assessment tasks with the learning objectives. These are skills that are generally not taught to instructors and are skills that usually need to be developed by the institution and by the instructors in order to actually present and develop proper authentic assessments. So, to give you a quick feel about the detail required in design, if you don't already have this experience, here are some examples. And I'm using a course, a grad cert course that only has four units in the course. There's a lot of detail on this slide. The idea is not to give you, for you to read the words, but it's for you to get an idea of how you might map and what assessments might look like across a course that's made up of simply four assessments. So, in this course, there's a total of 24 assessments, 15 authentic assessments, and nine online discussion forums, which are non-graded discussion forums. And you can see how those assessments map across different types of assessment types and styles in this particular course. But if you take it one step further, for every one of those assessments, it's important, as we said before, to make sure that the assessments map back to the course learning outcomes. So, all assessments must align or map to the subject learning outcomes, the course learning outcomes, the graduate attributes, and any other model that you use within your jurisdiction that aligns to your higher education accreditation that you would need to maintain in order to be an authentic institution. So, usually, this level of detail is required in the online environment because online courses are generally offered in asynchronous modes. And this allows students to learn at their own pace. This is after all, one of the major benefits of online courses. So, very quickly, I'd like to just talk a little bit about online learning activities and content. And as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, using the backward design model, only when you're clear about course learning objectives and have a clear understanding of the type and style of assessment that you'd like to use and you've developed authentic assessments that support the learning objectives, only then should you consider designing your corresponding learning activities and instructional content. Do not, however, underestimate, in my view, the importance of high-quality and relevant activities and content and the importance that they play in maintaining student engagement and leading to the success or failure of students in a course. Remember, if one of the major benefits of online learning is that it's continuous, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the course that you design should enable learning on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis, then its design should be asynchronous. And asynchronous learning tools start with selecting the most appropriate learning management system or digital platform. And I'm sure all of your institutions have something like that. And here are just some of the examples, some of the more popular ones that are out there. And there are many, many available. So, it's important, if you don't already have a good LMS, that you take some time to consider the many options that are available. Once you've selected the LMS, it's even important and much more important now that your faculty, your staff, know how to use it. You'll note in this slide that I've used only a few features available in one of the main elements is Blackboard. And despite these features and attending numerous sessions over the years, Blackboard sessions that I've had experience with, I'm still absolutely surprised by the number of online meetings and webinars that I join where the facilitator doesn't even know the basics of the platform or how to use the features and struggles with, for example, how to set up a collaborative session, how to use, how to turn on their microphone, how to put a presentation up. Some very, very basic errors are made just with not understanding the features and how to use those features. So, once you've got an understanding of the features of the online platform, you can then start thinking about integrating teaching and learning resources and activities that are aligned to the assessment and to the topic that you've developed. In terms of the myriad of teaching resources that are available, and this slide, it doesn't attempt to show even a part of that. This is just a snippet of the online resources that are available to you to make your subjects and your sessions more engaging, interactive and relevant. It's really, really important to make sure that you also look at the licensing requirements of any of the resources that you use. So, it should not always be about restricting your course materials to the PowerPoint slides that are supplied with the publisher's textbook that you adopt. If it is, this is usually one of the main reasons that, no doubt, your student servers would say that they are not engaged and that your institution may have poor engagement. Further, similar to authentic assessment, design, sourcing, editing and customizing online resources, to be specific to your course, is also time-consuming. So, Dr. Andy showed a short while ago a 90-second video of one of his 90-second sessions in our 30-minute talks. I presented a 90-second session yesterday. And I can let you know that that 90-second session, with my poor lack of skills in the space, took me about nine hours to prepare. So, you can see that there's a significant investment in preparing the materials to put across the subject and the message that you want to portray or present to your students. So, for example, if you use YouTube resources to help you with video content, whilst there are many, many online videos available on the internet that you might be able to use, how many times have you attended an online session when this is what happens? Let's watch a short 45-second video. Oh, well, you can see that that might be an example. Well, let me try again and give you another example.
Hello. Oh, I'm sorry. We're only boarding rows nine and above right now. You'll have to wait.
I'm in row eight.
Please step aside, sir.
It's just one row. Don't you think it's our pay grade?
We'll call your row momentarily. Step aside, sir. Thank you for waiting. We'd like to continue boarding the aircraft now. We're now boarding all rows, please. All remaining rows.
So, I'm not really going to comment on the video that I've selected, but you can see that this is just a quick example of preparing a resource to suit. The video might be low presentation, but that really means that it can suit low bandwidth. But in order to prepare that video, the video was downloaded using a video downloader. And there are many to choose from. That video was edited in Premiere Pro. That's an editing software to customize and add opening slides and make sure that it flowed. It was saved as an MPG four file for embedding into the PowerPoint presentation. And then, it was embedded into the PowerPoint. But most importantly in this process, it's the fact that I've taken the time to find the best and the most appropriate resource for the task. I prepared and edited the resource so it works for the purpose that I wanted it to. And I've checked that it actually works. And I know that if I watch this presentation on a phone or on a tablet or a laptop, then it will present in each of those media. So, in summary, preparing assessments and learning activities can be a nightmare if you don't understand and plan for how they're connected and how collectively they help to engage students. Remember, carefully plan the course and the expected learning outcomes using the backward designs model. Design authentic assessments aligned to real-world activities. Execute delivery with interactive learning activities. Evaluate progress through the clever use of content. This all helps to ensure student engagement. And don't forget the quality loop. Get feedback, review and improve and do it all again. Thank you for your time. And I trust this presentation helps you with a little bit with your online assessment and teaching resources. And I'd like to hand over to Lee, who will introduce my colleague, Professor Perry Hobson. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sir Alan Williams. Now, I'd like to present to you our third panel, our third panelist. He's a professor who holds a bachelor's degree from Oxford, Brooks University in the United Kingdom, a master's from the University of Massachusetts in the United States, and a PhD from Southern Cross University in Australia. He's an editor-in-chief of the SSCI Index Journal of Vacation Marketing for over 20 years. A member of the Board of Directors of the ICE Accreditation Body, a past president of APACREE. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you the pro-Vice Chancellor, Engagement, Sunway University, all the way from Malaysia, Professor Perry Hobson.
Well, thank you, Lee, so much for that wonderful introduction. Much appreciated. Really do appreciate that. And good afternoon to everybody who is out there. I think, hopefully, today will be an interesting session for everybody. I really hope that we give you a lot of takeaways from this session. So, look, as you heard in my introduction, I'm originally from the UK. I now work here in Malaysia. And so, I'm based here at Sunway University. And I've been living in Malaysia since 2012 now. So, it's been eight years. But over the years, I've made many visits to the Philippines. So, it's great to have that opportunity to come over. And also, as times change and as things change, now to be with so many people virtually. I've been to CoRep and presented at CoRep conferences in the past. So, this is the first time I'm engaging with you digitally. And dare I say, this is a bit of a sign of the way things are happening. We've been expecting waves of disruption throughout the economy, whether it's been from music and photographs, through to print media, through to retail. And for some time now, people were saying that education was going to be much more digitalized. And people said, no, 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 that won't happen. Everyone wants to come to campus. Well, look, it's taken a pandemic, but things have happened very, very fast. And the fact that it's happened so fast, what we've now got is a period of significant disruption. And a lot of people have suddenly found themselves teaching online, delivering online. They never expected to do that. And, you know, we've got a lot of things happening. But I think this digital disruption has turbocharged those changes. I don't think that things are just going to go back to the way they were. And I think we all as educators have to realize that this has been a fundamental shift. I think very few of you have probably gone off to buy some Kodak film recently. So, when we make the change, that's quite significant in terms of what's happened and is happening. So, you may have had to jump in at the deep end. And this year was a deep-end jump for me. And I think it's worth sharing that because that puts into context some of the comments that I want to make. So, this year, I went again to teach in Austria. I've been working there since 2006, giving some guest lectures every year. It's a block format. And I tend to go and give those lectures over three or four days. But of course, things changed very dramatically this year. So, Innsbruck is a beautiful city in Austria, small, mountainous. Typically, I go in May. There's a little bit of snow that's still there. And I actually teach a course there on the future. And what I get students to do is to look at 2050, to talk about how tourism will be in 30-odd years' time, 30 years' time. And I ask them to look at what their preferred future would be, what the probable futures would be. And normally, just one section of my course is about what we call black swan events. These are events which are very rare and they're unforeseen and they're not anticipated. And of course, this year, my whole course was dominated by the fact that a black swan event, the pandemic, had happened. So, how did that change my life? Well, normally, when I go there and here's some pictures of me with my former students in past years, it's a very interactive workshop that I give. And then, this year, this was it. Now, the additional challenge to this is that normally, I would get a class of 60 students of which, something like, in this particular case, three-quarters are actually from overseas. And they're traveling to Austria. Only about a quarter of the students are locals. So, this year, the challenge was having students from around the world. I had students in 18 countries. But most of them couldn't get there. Some were there and had to leave. So, it was a really mixed bag of situations. So, literally in at the deep end. I was working with two other people, one based in Ghana, one based in Austria. So, we had to coordinate this across continents. And as I mentioned, the students were also across continents. They were spread on 15 time zones from Seoul through to Vancouver. And this raised questions about how we included the students in all the activities that we were doing. Such a, so, because of simple time zone differences. So, we had a lot of problems and we had to fish for solutions. We had to take, obviously, everything online. We had to change the timing. I realized that my normal teaching blocks, because normally I teach a full day, you just can't do that online. Well, often I had students who didn't interact. The wonderful thing about, I found about online was that I had forums to use and we could get students to comment on other students' work. I could put students in breakout rooms. Yes, there were time zone challenges. And of course, I had to change the assessments because there's no exam room for them to go into as such. So we had to make many changes to what we did. And of course, coordinating this across a teaching team that now a guest lecturing team across that time. And those time zones, so that was very challenging. So the three key learnings I want to share with you today. First is about inclusivity, then to talk about the net etiquette and then the need for pacing and taking a break with this. So where do my students go? Well, of course, students were not attending lectures before COVID came along. Now, of course, we've had to follow the students online because the students were already online. They are very much social media animals. The digital natives that we're teaching these days have grown up with an online environment, so they're already there. Campuses were already feeling these changes. And the campus of your future, already your library was the local coffee shop, where students felt more comfortable than on the hard seats in your library. So this was already happening. Our lecture theatres, well, that's been moved online. This was actually a piece of work done by University of Northern Ireland, looking at study spaces. And you can begin to see there now that's the lecture theatre of of today. So things have changed quite dramatically and we've got to change and adapt to that. So when we think about inclusivity, just because we've got the technology and wifi, doesn't mean that everyone's going to understand it. I remember years ago, my daughter saying, Dad, I don't need to go to school anymore. I said, really? Why is that? She goes, I have Google. Simple answer, right? But of course, the reality is that the world has changed. And so we have to change with it and understand that yes, information is now freely available. But of course, it doesn't mean you can understand the information you've got. Now, we know that in the Philippines, inclusivity also means how students got access to the resources. And when this comes online, this can be quite a challenge because unfortunately, as many of you have told me over the years, the infrastructure of internet penetration in the Philippines isn't so good. And if we look across Southeast Asia, whilst Singapore is the best and Myanmar is the worst, Philippines is not so good in the middle of the field, only 64% penetration in terms of the population. And when it comes to download speeds, wow, well, that's another story. Again, many of you have told me about how slow internet problems are. So you can begin to see how fast it is in Singapore versus the Philippines. So certainly inclusivity has got challenges because when we go online, how can we make sure that students are included in the activities we've got? Even the equipment that students have. When things happened here in Malaysia, we went into lockdown in the middle of March and we suddenly realized that a lot of our students didn't have laptops. So a lot of the learning was being done on mobile phones. So this presented us with some quite significant challenges. And when it comes to downloads, the question has been what to do about that bandwidth? And then you've got to make decisions about what do you have that's synchronous learning? So as was just being shown by Alan, can you download the video in a synchronous mode or do you say, no, I will upload that and you can download it later when you've either got better bandwidth? When, because obviously even in some places, the time of day can make a big difference to to bandwidth loading. So we need to start thinking about those things because otherwise it will disadvantage students who haven't got the latest equipment and don't happen to be sitting in an area with good bandwidth. So not every student has the same learning environment and we have to recognize that as well. So it's not just being able to have the technology, it's where are they also trying to learn? Now, one of the advantages of putting students online is that we can network the students. Our teaching before was very much teacher centric and I see that across Asia. But now, if we put students together in a network, how can we help those students interact with one another? And learn from one another as much as they're learning from the person who is the teacher. So it takes our role to be much more facilitator or networker. Now, of course, it's not just about using the contacts in the classroom, but how can we also use those in other other networks? How can we help our students connect to other experts, mentors and peers? So we need to think about our classroom without walls. And what are other ways that we can do that and using the ed tech market? So there are exciting new possibilities that come from teaching online. And it's been able to find those other ways of creating those networks. Because these are just the sorts of skills that your students are going to be needing when they leave the university environment. So how can we get them to better network? What can we able to do so that we are not disadvanting students? So when we want to be inclusive, we also need to be engaging. We need to work out to help students not only to collaborate, to peer review each other's work, but we also as educators need to make sure we're giving timely feedback. Because we've got to reach out to those students. And of course, this can be hard and it's very challenging. Now, what are some of the things you can do? Well, of course, I'm just going to touch on a couple of these today. But of course, we have got students of less privilege. So the question is going to be, how do we reach out and support them? So it's designing course assignments and redesigning them to be more flexible and adaptable. It's working out, as you heard from Alan, about how you can be more experimental with your multimedia assignments. How can we upload them, use lower resolutions? Can we do things synchronous or asynchronous delivery? But of course, it's about being attentive and supportive. For me, when I realized I had students in Canada, they couldn't participate because my class in Austria would start at 10 AM. That meant I had to go online at 4 PM in the afternoon. But unfortunately, that was 4 AM for students in Vancouver in Canada. So I decided I had to start teaching at 10 o'clock at night, so it was 6 AM in Canada, so that some of those students could last, get up and be available. Now, of course, once we've got students interacting with one another and that then presents the next problem, and that's how do we make sure students are interacting properly? And we talk a lot about etiquette on our campuses, about how people should dress, how people should behave, how people should address and talk to one another. And once we go onto an online space, as many of you have seen, this becomes equally challenging. So we need to make sure we've got proper social conventions. We've got students to make sure that they're using technology in the right way. So who are you? Are you the calm collector type or are you the person that hits that keyboard? Because the students will bring with them many of the, dare I say, poor skills that they may have learned or what else they've seen that's happening in the cyberspace. So we need to remind students that they've got to apply the same standards online as in real life. And this becomes really important. They need to learn how to respect other students, their opinions, and they mustn't be rude. Because remember, as they said in the movies, in space, no one can hear you scream. I think a few of you like me might might will remember that movie Alien when it came out back in 1979. But as they say in cyberspace, everyone can hear you scream. So you have to be really careful now how we use this and how we use this sort of technology. Now, some universities, and this is from Oklahoma State University in the US, have developed net etiquette guidelines. And this is something you either need to develop yourself or work with your institution to develop. Because obviously with so many students online, we need to have something that is common. Because if students are breaking these guidelines, then we've also got to think about what sort of sanctions we're going to start involving to deal with these sort of problems. Because again, once it gets out of hand and gets out of control. So whether it's dress attire, whether it's how students are bullying and sarcasm, all these sorts of things have got to be dealt with. So a few net etiquette tips from me. Please make sure you tell students to turn their camera on. That was one of my biggest problems was that I was talking to a blank screen. And for whatever reason, the culture of of previous guest lecturers that had gone in had been that the students had their cameras off, so I couldn't see anybody. I mean, it was it was like really being blind. I wanted to make sure I welcomed students. I used forums, I developed breakout rooms. I made sure I went through the student list to personally address students. Because it makes sure you can reach out and get them engaged. And then I also knew whether what I was saying was making any sense to those students. Now, it was also then working out how to give activities to give them between sessions, such as watching a video. So I would deliberately time my sessions, and I'll talk a bit about more about that in a moment, to allow that to happen. And of course, you've got to work out what happens when students flat those rules. So it can get quite tense at times, depending how students react. But let's remember, you've got to keep calm and make sure you get your students to follow those rules. Now, lastly, we all need to take a break. Now, time flies by when you're online, but it's just not mentally or physically good for us to be spending so much time sitting. Which is one of the reasons that I like giving webinars standing up, because again, it stops me sitting. Many people have said that the new smoking is sitting, you know, it's just as likely to cause cancer, etc. So we have to help ourselves as educators, but also the students too. So we need to get reg, to schedule regular breaks. Because and also students just won't be engaged. Now, I want you to think about teaching like a boxing match. Now Manny Pac-Man, I know is one of the heroes of the Philippines. But remember this, a boxing match has 12 rounds. Each round only lasts eight minutes and then you've got a break. So how are you going to pace your teaching delivery? All right? We've got to think about that and develop and design different activities and to give breaks. Because what else are Filipinos world champions of? Well, here's a couple of interesting facts you may or may not know. Firstly, fact is Filipinos spend more time on the internet than anyone else in the world. Yes, you guys spend 10 hours and 2 minutes a day. Now, you may say to me, well, that's because our internet speeds are so low. And there may be something in that, of course. But when you compare that to Japan, who only spend 3 hours and 45 minutes, it's a significant change, second only to Brazil, by the way. So Brazil, sorry, is number is number two in there. So Filipinos spend a huge amount of time on the internet. Oh, it gets better because you're also number one, ready for this? You're also number one for social media use. You spend over four hours and 2 minutes, 1 minute a day, sorry, on Philip, on on the social media. Beating are clearly above Nigeria, Mexico, Turkey, Russia, India, and you again, you leave Japan in your wake. So unfortunately, you're world beating. So going online, I don't think is a challenge for Filipino students. That's not the issue here. In fact, as you can see, Filipinos are spending a lot of time online. If anything, you're spending too much time online. So the question is not a quantity of time, but it's of the quality. And you've also got to take a break because students need to have a break. All right? In the old days, we used to fall asleep with the books. Now we fall asleep with a computer. You as staff also need to take a break. We all do. So as you've, we've been talking about how you prepare yourself for online teaching. And as you've heard from Dr. Andy, you've got to have proper lighting. But you also need to think about things about how to minimize the glare on your screen, to adjust your computer settings. And you've got to modify your workstation. Because the amount of hours we're spending hunched over the computer, it's really bad on people's backs, on your necks. So you've got to get the right equipment because this is your workplace. So just as a coal miner needs proper equipment to go down a coal mine, you need the right equipment when you are being a teacher. Because you're going to have to spend lots of hours. So you've got to take a break. You've got to get up regularly and you've got to not sit around just for hours. You can arrange those study breaks. There's plenty of functions. You can put timer settings on, however you want to do it. But remember, taking a break is probably the most important thing because it'll also comes into your health and wellbeing. As I said, not just for you, but also for your students. So if you're taking your teaching online, there are many resources around there to take. I'll refer to you one at the Open University in the UK. They've got a great course on taking your teaching online. So as I said, same teacher, different tools. So lots of tools and guidelines and ideas that we've got for you. But there's plenty of other resources out there that you can access as well. Now, as you've heard from Dr. Andy, we developed 30 minute talks. We look forward to seeing you on our different 30 minute talks. And each week, we've got different and engaging people and topics to talk about. Because again, COVID brought us an opportunity to do things differently. And yes, I've been coming to the Philippines for many years to talk about digital and about engaging and different and different education technologies. And ed tech itself has now gone online. Before, it was every year at SMX Centre in Manila. And now they've gone online, so 17th and 18th of August. So if this is an area of interest to you, you can enroll and sign up and register to that. And Dr. Andy and I are talking on the 18th of August at 5 PM about how to engage your students in a digital classroom. Because the world has changed. And as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we're not going to go back. I was involved for many years with what's called the Hotel School in Sydney in Australia. And there you can go online, that's the link to the YouTube video. Have a listen to that. A student talking about their online studied experience. Now, before we would have said studying hotel management online, impossible, can't be done. So it's amazing how that is is changing. And not only is it being done at undergraduate level, we're launching a new master's in international hospitality management here at Sunway University coming up next month. And again, that's been done online. So these are the changes. These are the changes that are coming across education. So from all my students that I had to deal with in in Austria, who weren't, many of them worked in Austria, but around the world, education has now become a global undertaking. So keep calm. The future is coming. We just need to work out and to strategize and to realize the changes that are coming and how we can learn. And hopefully today's sessions have given you some insights in how to be better prepared for that future. Lee, back to you.
Wow. Thank you, Professor Perry Hobson. That was indeed an eye opener. Learned so much from the three of you. I think everybody's going to go back in the screen. Good job, everyone. So that's amazing. All right. So Dr. Andy, Dr. Alan. So we have a few questions. Are we going to entertain the questions right now?
Sure, go ahead, Lee. Let us know what question, what's the most there.
Well, it's interesting because aside from the questions that you've already answered, some people just agreed that our problem here in the Philippines is the connectivity. But then again, Professor Perry Hobson said, we're all connected online the longest around the world. So do you think that's a fact?
Well, as I said, as I said, I think, you know, you're spending over 10 hours a day, average Filipino. I mean, that is world-class stuff. Now, maybe it's because the internet is so slow, you're having to spend so much time on the internet to do what the Japanese can do in 3 hours and 45 minutes, it's taking you over 10 hours to do. I can't comment on that. What I do know is that when Dr. Andy and I have been giving presentations, he often asks students, how many of you had friends on Facebook? And and we were absolutely blown away. And I think if I remember, Andy, that the highest we had was one student who had over 5,000 friends, if I remember that correctly.
There were some students had so many friends and I, and the question was, are they really your friends? But it's a different presentation.
About 4,900.
Okay. But we then asked how many hours you were spending on, you know, a day. And I remember one student said, I spend five to six hours a day. So Filipino connectivity, that's, you know, the the this, I think is a very strong issue. So it's something that Filipina, I think you've got to work out how to capitalize on that. Other countries, people are not so well networked. The question is, how do you turn those networks into learning networks, not just social networks?
All right, indeed. There's a question here that is asking about the advantage and the disadvantage. Which one is better, using Edmodo or Schoology? An anonymous questioner. From anonymous question. Did you get that? What is better to use, Edmodo or Schoology?
Yeah, I saw the question and and I saw the response to Edmodo or Moodle as, you know, to help with lecturers that have worried about this differentiation, differentiated instructional process. To be honest, I also put in the in the response there and I've given a link to to that that person. There's, there's a number of websites and there's a whole range of resources that are available. So maybe have a look at that website. I think there's, there's in addition to 25 pieces of software and third-party products that are available to to help in this differentiated instruction space. The choice is really going to come down to what's, what's the most affordable, what's the best suited to your environment? The choice is really going to come down to what's the most affordable, what's the best suited to your environment, what's the best suited to the platform that you use and so on. So have a look at that, I don't think we're, you know, working on promoting any one product in particular, but there are lots of products that support differentiated instruction.
Indeed. All right, so there's a question here about the administration. Hmm, I wonder why? How can the administration ensure that an enriched virtual learning is properly conveyed or implemented by faculties, like a monitoring perhaps? It's a question from Mr. Gamotea of the University of St. Lasalle. Gentlemen?
Yeah, the key, the key to that is administrators have to know what their instructors are doing online. And the best way to do that is student evaluations. When I was teaching, when I was teaching a course in Taiwan in a couple of months, several months ago, I had students do evaluations every day for two weeks. Now, that was twofold, one was the practice evaluating themselves and their performance, but also to give comments, because it was the first time we were teaching that course online. I didn't want to teach a whole course. And on the last day, everyone said, well, we really didn't like what you did that first week. So every day was a sort of an evaluation of how are we doing today? What did you like, what didn't you like? And you can make adjustments as you go through the course.
Indeed, I agree, I agree.
From, sure. Might I just jump into on that one? Because here at the university, at Sunway University, obviously, we had to go online in one heck of a hurry. So we had about two weeks, because we delayed the start of our semester, as happened in many places. And to be honest, we were not particularly focused on online delivery beforehand and even blended. So this was a big change. And obviously, we've been looking around to learn very quickly about how we can get that feedback from students. And are now setting up a whole range of different policies and procedures in terms of what is going to be the best practice. So I think there was quite a body about best practice beforehand. I think now that literally, you know, online learning has gone from being a handful of institutions to virtually everybody, we're learning a lot more about that and particularly for institutions where that was not their key mode of delivery. Now, what we've been using for our teaching and learning area is to identify ways, as Andy said, you know, to make sure we've got timely feedback that's coming back from students. And again, that's changing. My concern is that what was okay in April this year, when we basically started this, is not going to be okay for next semester and it sure as heck ain't going to be okay next year. So we have got to really tool up to be ready with that. And the challenge will be during this COVID situation, if some universities will reopen, students will come back, we may get spikes. I just heard from a friend in Vietnam today, in Da Nang, they've closed the city down, everything's shut again. So we're going to have to be very agile in terms of our delivery so that we are ready to go back to being fully online or we can do some form of blended. So most universities are really going to have to think this one through to make sure they've got the resources to support the students if another lockdown comes in.
I agree, I agree.
I might, Lee, also add a couple of comments to that as well. Not that we want to spend a lot more time on this particular topic, but I think any strategy to move online really is not bottom-up, it's top-down as well. That you need the institution to really think long and hard about the strategy for moving online. What is required, what resources are required? What resources do you have, what resources do you need to bring in? What's the cost of moving to online? What new space or new learnings do you need to encompass? And then, you know, disseminate that across the whole institution. And that includes, you know, administration and teaching faculty and so on, making sure that they're all familiar with what the strategy is, what the ground rules are and what best practice is. And then when you've got an institution-wide understanding of that, I think you've got a better chance of actually being more effective in the online space. It can't be hit and miss in terms of individual lecturers might be doing good jobs, but you might have another colleague who's got no idea. There is a misconception in some spaces that I feel quite regularly, and that is, we're going online, it's easier, it's a lot easier to teach online than it might be face-to-face. In fact, nothing could be further from the truth, it's much more difficult and it requires a lot more attention and a lot more, I guess, effort from the student and the faculty perspective.
I agree with you. Now, a follow-up question perhaps, is this from an anonymous person? What support should the schools and universities provide to the faculty to prepare for this new normal? Because Dr. Andy mentioned speakers and microphones and perhaps who's going to pay for the internet connectivity? Without getting into trouble, what are your recommendations?
Well, the administration should pay for everything, buy everyone a new computer, a new camera, a new microphone. But that's not, that's not, what I do recommend is use what you have to the best of your ability. And if you want to be a good teacher, you sometimes have to invest in yourself. There are some simple things you can buy that will make yourself better while you wait for the school to catch up and support you later. But if you just sit and wait, sometimes it'll never come. So you have to work together and you have to see what you can do to help improve your own teaching, not just waiting for someone else to improve it for you. So I know it's tough, we all have challenges.
It's an investment, it's going to be a big investment, but I agree with you, Dr. Andy. Now, Ms. Tina Aquino, our former Co-Rep President, would like to ask a true or false question. The bandwidth for FB is less than the bandwidth needed by any LMS. She has heard of this one, is it true or false? Any IT experts among the three of you?
Oh, no, that's a good question, I honestly don't know that.
All right.
I think that's probably true. I mean, I haven't looked at the facts in it, but I think any social media platform has much less bandwidth requirement than any learning management system. And that's just purely because a learning management system is a complicated beast. It is, you know, it's a piece of software that's designed to deal with multiple requirements. Whereas a social media platform, although it might have a couple of features, those features are quite limited. So I think there's no doubt that a good LMS will always require much greater bandwidth, especially when you start adopting third-party software, start putting in a bandwidth intensive videos and video conferencing and all those sorts of things. So I know one of the challenges, which is on that point that might be in the Philippines, I know it certainly is a challenge in some other countries. And that is that some of the regulations in terms of teaching in Philippines restrict institutions using social media as a teaching tool. So that's something that might need to be thought about, not only from an institutional perspective, but also from a governmental perspective, in that setting up teaching groups in social media sites is something that's becoming quite acceptable now around the world. So it's something to consider.
Interesting, so I have this last question, perhaps I'm just gonna, this is our last question from Ms. Gliza Yungot. How would you able to approach students who will not, well, this is a common problem here, who will not have the accessibility or sources to do the online requirements?
Well, you know, the key, the key, they have to remember that many years ago, there were no computers. And we used to do correspondence courses. And you'd get a letter in the mail and it'd say, here is your assignment. Take a piece of paper and do the assignment, mail it back. So while there are situations where students may need additional support or additional time, today, anything is possible. And sometimes you've just got to make sure the students understand, they can do it. But don't tell them how to do it, ask them, how can you accomplish this outcome? Because this is the job you have to do and you've got to tell me how you're going to do it.
I agree, I agree. Anything you'd like to say, Madam President? I would now therefore conclude that the Q and A is over. So our panelist is going to present something, a video presentation, I understand. But would you like to proceed first with our appreciation to our amazing panelists this afternoon?
In behalf of the Council of Hotel and Restaurant Educators of the Philippines, I would like to thank all our great, amazing panelists. The rock stars of the education in hospitality, Dr. Andy, Dr. Perry and Alan. We have 293 participants who really stayed on until we were about to conclude the webinar. It was a very interesting webinar, starting from how we should look and to how we should deliver. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you to all our members in the Visayas region, thank you for joining us, as well as our members from the Sun and Midda now. Another great day for Co-Rep, another great set of speakers for Co-Rep. Thank you very much. And now we present the certificate of appreciation from Co-Rep to our great three speakers, Dr. Andy, Dr. Perry and Dr. Alan. We will send the certificates to you via email. And I would like to remind everyone, if you want to get your E-certification from Co-Rep, please respond to the evaluation, to the survey sheet, to the evaluation sheet, which is actually online right now. Thank you and keep safe, everyone, and Lee?
Yes. Yes, and Dr. Andy seems to be going to present a short video for all of our participants.
On a video and we're going to post the survey, I'm going to put the survey link in the chat room and Alan will have a QR code, so get ready for that. And everyone must complete the survey in order to receive a certificate. So we'll be putting that into the chat room and Alan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Andy. And just before I go over to the final part of the presentation from myself, thank you to all the Co-Rep members, thank you, Joji, thank you, Lee, for a fantastic presentation. Thank you for a very, very informative session and I'll share that presentation with you very shortly. Perry, to you.
Yeah, and thanks again for the invitation to once again be part of Co-Rep and to join your wonderful organization and to give our insights, we always value the invitation. So thank you again very much and for all the support that we received from many institutions for 30 minutes. And we look forward to engaging with your students online every Wednesday at 2 o'clock.
Thank you so much and good afternoon.
There we go, Andy, I'll let you just talk through that survey if you'd like to quickly.
Two things, actually, the survey helps us improve the presentations today and also you can add more information about topics for the future. The link has been put in the chat, you can, we, you know, we have started to use QR codes because most people use their phones. And if you point your phone at and take a picture, it'll take you to the survey directly. Additionally, if you want a copy of the information that was presented today, the websites and some of the links and that kind of a summary of the presentation, we'll be happy to send that to you, but you must fill out this survey and you must put your email in to request that, that's the only way we can send that to you. So it's very important you fill out this survey.
Thank you, Dr. Andy, and to close up the session, everybody, we share a nice piece of a video that we found that we think is very relevant for today. Keep safe, everybody, and enjoy.
Keep safe, God bless everyone.
It doesn't matter where. It doesn't matter when. It doesn't even matter how. Teachers find a way to show up.
Good morning, students.
Good morning.
So whatever school looks like in the future, whether it takes place in classrooms, living rooms or chatrooms, we know you'll be there to fuel our days, feed our minds and fill our hearts.
We love you, we miss you, we're thinking of you.
We're counting on it because we need you and it doesn't work without you.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
It's very touching. Thank you, mabuhay, everyone, God bless you.
Thank you, everyone keep safe. Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Andy, Perry and Alan.
Thanks for being here, bye, everybody.